Our meeting is called order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Buckner.
Here.
Reverend Campbell.
Here.
Mr. Gilstrap.
Here.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Here.
Mr. Rowley.
Here.
Mayor Saunders.
Here.
Mr. Shanks.
Here.
Mr. Vogler.
Here.
Please stamp an indication, remain standing for the pledge given tonight by Councilmember Buddy Rowley, Jr.
Let us pray. Father in heaven, we thank you for another day in your gift of life. Father, at this time of Thanksgiving, we thank you for all the blessings that you bestow upon us. We thank you for friends and family and how much they mean to us. Father, we just pray you'll be with us tonight as we conduct the business of the citizens of Danville, God will direct us in decisions. Father, we also ask that you be with our men and women in uniform around the world, whether it be in the military or whether it be in the police or fire, sheriff's departments. We just pray for those men and women and just thank you for all that they do for us. We thank you, Father, again for another day. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Rowley, and welcome, everyone. Those who wish to speak on any item not on the agenda will be heard at this time. If you wish to speak on any agenda item, you will be heard when the item is considered. Welcome, young lady.
Thank you, Mayor Saunders. I would like for Chief Rodford, Sheriff Mondle, and Sheriff Mondle's deputies to join me at the podium.
And your name, please?
Not you yet. Not you yet.
And your name, please?
I'll let you know.
Your name, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Gracie Mays and I am a Pennsylvania County resident, but I hope you all will be in Danville tonight.
Welcome. Thank you.
Approximately nine years ago, I come up with this wild idea for our police officers in Danville and our police officers in Pennsylvania County to do a charity softball game. And the money raised from the gate and all that would go to charities. So it has been a success. The first two years, Pennsylvania County won. Oh, and the prize was a trophy. And each year, whoever won the trophy would keep it for a year and bring it back until the next year. Well, year number three, Danville won that trophy. You should have seen Chief Rodford. He was happy like a little kid getting up at Christmas. So year number three, Danville won it. Well, six years later, we're back. But what happened about two years ago, Sheriff Mondle, with all the great things he's been doing, he was saying, well, I want my guys to get involved. So we kind of changed things around where his guys could get involved, but you know, still no luck. Well, year number nine, I'm here to present the trophy to the Danville Police Department and the Danville Sheriff's Office for winning this year's game. They actually won two out of the three. They actually merged and made one team. So for one year, this trophy will stay in the city of Danville. So Mayor Saunders, if you'd come down, I'll present this to you and to the chief and the bike. These are some of the players that was on the team for the Danville Sheriff's Office.
Am I correct that Chief Rodford and Sheriff Mondle scored six runs each?
(laughing).
Did y'all say anything?
Yeah, you can present that.
Sheriff and chief, in the absence of Danville, congratulations on your sixth run each.
Thank you.
Those guys have earned right here.
If I might, Mr. Mayor, I have to be honest. In addition to the great charitable resources that we were able to develop over the past nine years, honestly, it's a bit of a pride thing within ranks of law enforcement every year that we play this game. So it feels great to be able to have this trophy to rotate back and forth between the police department and the sheriff's office for a solid year. And we'll certainly just play in prominent places so it can be seen by our brothers and sisters in Pennsylvania County so they can see it when it comes up.
Just want to let everyone know that we appreciate everything Gracie has done. She's a friend for law enforcement and a friend for charity. And it was her idea to make all this happen. And money has been raised for various charities each year, and we're happy to do it and we're also happy to have that come back.
And I will say one thing, this is the first year that I have missed the game and they won. So hopefully next year, for the 10th year, we'll make it big and better, you know, for going on 10 years.
Okay, to the men and women of the Danville Police Department and Danville Sheriff's Department, congratulations again, and thank you for representing our city and making us proud. Mr. Shanks.
Sheriff Mondle, just wanted to say that back in the day, we would call it bringing in the ringers, and I appreciate every effort you've made.
All of our folks were 100% legitimate law enforcement, I would say I can promise you.
Ms. Campbell.
Ms. Mondle and Chief Rodford, council is expecting for the trophy to be longer than one year.
We would gladly loan it to council if they wanted to play it for a little while.
Anyone else in council?
Repeat.
Anyone else? Thank you so much. Anyone else wish to speak on any item not on the agenda? Thank you. Is there a motion to approve our minutes November 6, 2014? Mr. Campbell, seconded by Mr. Rowley. Discussion on the motion. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Buckner.
Aye.
Reverend Campbell.
Aye.
Mr. Gilstrap.
Aye.
Mr. Jones.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Aye.
Mr. Rowley.
Aye.
Mayor Saunders.
Aye.
Mr. Shanks.
Aye.
Mr. Vogler.
Aye.
Mr. Buckner.
Aye.
Reverend Campbell.
Aye.
Mr. Buckner.
Aye.
Mr. Sanders.
Aye.
Mr. Shanks.
Aye.
Mr. Vogler.
Aye.
Mr. Buckner.
Aye.
Reverend Campbell.
Aye.
Mr. Buckner.
Aye.
Mr. Sanders.
Aye.
Mr. Shanks.
Aye.
Mr. Vogler.
Aye.
Mr. Buckner.
Aye.
Reverend Campbell.
Aye.
Mr. Buckner.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Aye.
Mr. Rowley.
Aye.
Mayor Saunders.
Aye.
Mr. Shanks.
Aye.
Mr. Vogler.
Aye.
Mr. Buckner.
Aye.
Federation appropriating state and local funding for the Comprehensive Services Act. Open the public hearing. Anyone wish to speak? Anyone wish to speak? Close the public hearing. Mr. Campbell.
Mr. Mayor, I move for the adoption of ordinance amended fiscal year 2015 budget appropriation ordinance by appropriating the Comprehensive Services Act funds and providing local matching funds for a total appropriation amount of $4,124,170.
Second, Mr. Jones. Discussion on the motion. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Gilstrap.
Aye.
Mr. Jones.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Aye.
Mr. Rowley.
Aye.
Mayor Saunders.
Aye.
Mr. Shanks.
Aye.
Mr. Vogler.
Aye.
Mr. Buckner.
Aye.
Reverend Campbell.
Aye.
Federation of Ordinances appropriating state and local funding for the Comprehensive Services Act. Open the public hearing. Anyone wish to speak? Anyone wish to speak? Close the public hearing. Council, your pleasure. Mr. Rowley.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt an ordinance amended fiscal year 2015 budget appropriation ordinance to provide for the proceeds from the sale of general obligation bonds for fiscal year 2015 and appropriating the same for final adoption.
Okay, there's a second. Mr. Gilstrap. Discussion on the motion. Mr. Shanks.
Yes, Mayor, I just wanted to ask the manager a question. With regard to the individual projects that are included in the proposal, which we're voting on tonight, there are several different categories, including storm sewer improvements. Are those, is this vote approving those storm sewer improvements or the funds to float the bond?
Those improvements have already been approved.
In the capital improvement part. So is this the last?
This is the last step.
Okay.
Okay, further discussion? Madam Clerk.
Reverend Campbell.
Aye.
Mr. Gilstrap.
Aye.
Mr. Jones.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Aye.
Mr. Rowley.
Aye.
Mayor Saunders.
Aye.
Mr. Shanks.
Aye.
Mr. Vogler.
Aye.
Mr. Buckner.
Aye.
Reverend Campbell.
Aye.
Mr. Gilstrap.
Aye.
Mr. Jones.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Aye.
Mr. Rowley.
Aye.
Mayor Saunders.
Aye.
Mr. Shanks.
Aye.
Mr. Vogler.
Aye.
Mr. Buckner.
Aye.
Reverend Campbell.
Aye.
Federation of Ordinances to the cities, boards, and commissions. Mr. Vice Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, with permission, I'd like to read all these. Resolution reappointing Jeffrey L. Bond as a member of the Building Code Board of Appeals. Number two, a resolution reappointing Leonard B. Lackey as a member of the Employees Retirement System Other Post-Employment Benefits Board. Resolution reappointing Hampton L. Wilkins as a member of the Fair Housing Board. A resolution appointing Emmett S. Young as a member of the Fair Housing Board. A resolution appointing Jeffrey L. Bond as a member of the Commission of Architectural Review to fill an unexpired term ending August 31, 2018. A resolution appointing Crystal Farmer as a member of the Dan River Alcohol Safety Action Program to fill an unexpired term ending December 31, 2016.
Second, Mr. Jones. Discussion on the motion. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Jones.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Aye.
Mr. Rowley.
Aye.
Mayor Saunders.
Aye.
Mr. Shanks.
Aye.
Mr. Vogler.
Aye.
Mr. Buckner.
Aye.
Reverend Campbell.
Aye.
Mr. Gilstrap.
Aye.
Clear request by landowner to purchase a city-owned vacant lot adjacent to his property at 305 Campbell Street. Open the public hearing. Anyone wish to speak? Anyone wish to speak? Close the public hearing. Mr. Vogler.
Mr. Mayor, I move we adopt a resolution declaring a city-owned vacant lot surplus to the city's needs and accepting an unsolicited offer for the purchase of said vacant lot.
Okay, second, Mr. Buckner. Discussion on the motion. Madam Clerk.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Aye.
Mr. Rowley.
Aye.
Mayor Saunders.
Aye.
Mr. Shanks.
Aye.
Mr. Vogler.
Aye.
Mr. Buckner.
Aye.
Reverend Campbell.
Aye.
Mr. Gilstrap.
Aye.
Mr. Jones.
Aye.
Generation of appropriating funds for construction of the Riverwalk Sandy River Trail Project. Mr. Rowley.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt an ordinance amended fiscal year 2015 budget appropriation ordinance by increasing revenues to provide for a grant from the Virginia Department of Conservation, thank you, and Recreation, and for the recreational trails program in the amount of $200,000, and a transfer from special grants unassigned fund balance in the amount of $322,000 for total appropriation in the amount of $522,000 for constructions of the Riverwalk Sandy River Trail and appropriating the same for first reading.
Okay, there's second, Mr. Gilstrap. Discussion on the motion. Just one question, Mr. King. In looking at the plan for this event, am I correct that it does include bathroom facilities somewhere near the water fountain? Looking at the red mark on the map.
This is at the other end of the trail.
Yes.
So this does not include bathroom facilities.
Okay, so the red mark on there showing the location, the trailhead. So the bathroom, be where again, located where? Where will the bathroom be located?
Bill, could you help?
Somewhere in the drawing, I saw you have a map with the red line, the drawing on it, and the red lines in that talks about a bathroom and a trailhead or something?
There isn't any on this particular section.
Not this section.
Not this one?
No, sir.
Thank you. Further discussion? First reading. Okay. Federation appropriating request, Virginia Department of Transportation to reallocate revenue sharing program funds. Council, your pleasure. Mr. Jones.
Mr. Mayor, we adopt a resolution approving a request to the Virginia Department of Transportation to reallocate revenue sharing program funds for rare street maintenance and highway improvement projects.
Okay, there's a second. Mr. Buckner. Discussion on the motion. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Rowley.
Aye.
Mayor Saunders.
Aye.
Mr. Shanks.
Aye.
Mr. Vogler.
Aye.
Mr. Buckner.
Aye.
Reverend Campbell.
Aye.
Mr. Gilstrap.
Aye.
Mr. Jones.
Aye.
Communications, the manager.
Now report this evening. Just checking with the main man here.
Okay. All right, Mr. Attorney.
Yes, I'd like to congratulate the George Washington High School football team on what ends up being the best season they have had since 1996. They went undefeated in the regular season, won two playoff games, did not have exactly the result we wanted in Salem. I also wanted to thank everybody for their support. They had a tremendous crowd out to come out to send them off. That's the visitor side of Salem, seats about 1,500 people, and I bet there weren't 10 vacant seats. So the community support meant a whole lot to them and a whole lot to all of us that kind of consider ourselves associated with the program. But again, big congratulations to the city and to the football team.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Nothing, sir.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Buckner.
Yeah, I too, Clark, would like to congratulate the George Washington Eagles on a stellar season. They did a great job, really thoroughly enjoyed seeing them and hearing them, hearing you guys commentate, it was great. Good thing there was an attorney present for some of the things said there, right? Also, a while back, Councilman Vogler brought up a good point, and I also brought it up as well. And I think the school board's even brought it up about natural gas being used on buses. I think the school board's going to try to do that, and I think we ought to watch them very closely and see if that's something we can do. Also, the No Shave November was a great success. We were able to raise a little bit over $1,000 to give to the Danville Cancer Association. Next year, I hope we can make it much, much bigger and better, and I hope you all can participate. Also, I'd like to remind everybody of the Christmas parade coming up, December 13th. Should be a great time, and look forward to seeing you all there. That's all for tonight.
Thank you.
Reverend Campbell.
Yes, first of all, I'd like to also salute the George Washington football team for having such a great year, and as was stated, for the citizens of Danville supporting our youth. We have a group of young people in the back from Tonstall High School. I would like for them to stand, we just want to salute your participation. They're here to see more about how government works, and it's always good to see our youth interest in our policies and government here in Danville. Thank you all so much. And lastly, once again, I just want to thank city council for unanimously voting for "In God We Trust" not only to be placed on the wall behind the mayor, but at the interest coming into the chamber holds. It means a lot to us, and to have God's blessing upon what we do, and for our city manager speedily putting it up. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. Gilstrap.
I too would like to congratulate the George Washington High School Eagles. They had a great season. I would also like to congratulate the ace team from GW that won the conference, and I went to a couple of those, I was impressed. I couldn't even pronounce the words in the questions, most less answer them. But they did, and they did a great job. And I'd like to thank the students from Tonstall for attending tonight. Welcome anytime. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. Jones.
I want to thank Councilman Campbell for recognizing our young people here tonight because I know when you stood up, your teachers were so glad to see you here, so again, welcome to you all. Also, to Mr. Vogler, I want to thank you for letting me hang out with you, waving flags at GW on Saturday morning. Congratulations to the Eagles. My last coming, Mr. Mayor, is just want to say to city council members, it is a pleasure to serve and work with each one of you. The last couple of months, we all know, have been challenging and trying, and Mr. Buckner, it's been so challenging, I almost will be it myself. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Miller.
I have to congratulate the GW Eagles, they had a stellar season. They just, great season, just 12 and 1. Also, the "In God We Trust," Public Works did this, look how good that looks. I mean, people in the city that worked for the city did that, and didn't take them long. It's just beautiful. The Christmas parade, always a highlight of council's year. We get to ride in the parade, and so we're looking forward to that. So come on out to the Christmas parade. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Rowley.
I'm glad you mentioned the Christmas parade. I had one email on Sunday, or a text, that had two websites saying, what are y'all doing on Christmas parade? It's kind of confusing. One says December 5th, one says December 6th. So I went on the website, it was Danville, Kentucky. I didn't even look at the second one after I saw that one. Also, students from Tonstall, thank y'all for coming. You picked a good meeting to come to, kind of short and sweet. And also, the GW, to do what they did takes a lot of hard work, it takes a lot of good team play. You have to have some superstars, but you got to have a team, and they did. And I congratulate them for all their hard work, it really paid off, and their coaches too. Also, Mr. Mayor, we at Avret University have had some good things happening. Today, we had a little fundraiser for our faculty and staff, this was kind of the final day, and we had, Dan Hayes and I had said we would take five pies to the face if we got to 65% participation with our faculty and staff. Well, we got to about 80%, so Mr. Hayes and I took about five pies to the face, you'll see it on Facebook. It might even be out there now, I'm not sure. It was, my favorite was the banana, that tasted really good. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Rowley. You said five pies?
Five pies, yeah.
And I take it that the ones that you made, I take it that they were USDA appropriate?
Oh, yes, that was a bonita petite, yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Shanks.
Yes, thank you. I certainly want to say thank you to the Tonstall students that showed up tonight. It's wonderful to see folks interested in city, in county, in state government, federal government. You did pick a very good night to be here. You did not see a lot of government going on, and that's probably a good thing. Also, you know, there's been some paper articles, and Mr. Buckner mentioned it, I think the city is certainly in a good position to start looking at some slow gradual transition to natural gas vehicles. You know, I think about the fire, the trash and debris pickup trucks and things like that, and other vehicles. The city has, I mean, anybody that rides around during the daytime, there are a million orange trucks around, and then there's the city, the various other departments too. But there's an opportunity that as we go through the transition on new vehicles, I hope we do look into it and take advantage of it, especially since we do provide natural gas as well. Third item, and I've got just two more. Back before I was on city council, before Mr. Gilstrap was on city council, we had the good fortune of coaching Optimist League football. And I miss that, but I mean, with our meetings, we can't do it. But while we were coaching at that particular time, this GW team was coming up, and it sure is rewarding to see those fellows make the step that they've made. And I want to congratulate GW for all they've done the last two years, it's been wonderful. I love to see those kids that we coached and coached against do what they do. And finally, the 58th Chrismond tree is up. Danville, Virginia is the home of the Chrismond Ministry. The very first tree was here in Danville, Virginia. I would like to encourage and invite council members and members of the audience, folks on TV, watching on TV, to come by and see the many stories of Christ and the Bible that live on that evergreen tree, 22 feet tall, at Ascension Lutheran Church at 345 West Main Street. Every weeknight, 7 to 9, and weekends in those hours plus 3 in the afternoon on Sunday is a story to be told, and this is the season that those stories are so meaningful. So I encourage and invite anyone interested to please come by and sit down and just look at that beautiful tree and think of what it means. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Vogler.
Yeah, as Councilman Buckner had mentioned, you know, the natural gas conversion for the vehicle fleet, something that I've mentioned from time to time since I joined city council, and something that I hope we will look at again, and as Councilman Shanks noted, it is something definitely worth looking into, and now I believe our school board is looking into it as well. But localities across the country making the switch, actually, the Commonwealth of Virginia put in a bill, a delegate marshal, a few years ago where they started to make the conversion. So I hope that we continually look at it. I know we were told a few years ago, maybe it wouldn't be efficient for us, but you know, prices are always changing, situations are always changing, technology's always changing, so I hope we will reevaluate that situation again. And I know Councilman Buckner had brought it up when he used to be on the transportation committee. I too want to congratulate the GW football team on the tremendous season that they've had, not only this year, but last year. I think this two-year run that they had was certainly something to behold, and Hunter Burns and Malik Clements and all those guys on that team, tremendous job that they did. And as Councilman Jones pointed out, you know, we were there Saturday morning to wish them off, wish them well, and I know that they appreciated that, and a great season that they had, and I really enjoyed watching. I told somebody the other day that our quarterback, Hunter Burns, I thought was the best high school quarterback I've seen play since I saw Vic Hall about 10 years ago. And that's a high compliment. A great year they had, a great team. And now we're looking forward to GW basketball, and they're coming off a great year they had last year, and I think they're going to have another great year this year. Uh, so I'm glad that, that you all were here tonight. And I also wanted to mention, uh, and Mr. Hackworth, who's here, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but it's George Craghead Corbin, who used to be the, uh, mayor of Neapolis, otherwise known as, uh, North Danville, who now has his portrait hanging out in the hallway. And, uh, that recently went up, and I just wanted to make note of that, and thank Mr. Hackworth for being here tonight. And with that, Mayor, uh, I'm done.
Thank you.
Mayor Saunders?
Thank you. To our young people, welcome, glad you're here tonight. Thank you for showing your interest in government, because one day you'll be sitting around dances like these at some point, so this is good training for you, and thank you for being here, showing your interest. Also, to GW Eagles, special thanks to all of you. You make our city so very, very proud, and special thanks to the fans, to Danville community, for showing support for a wonderful team and these great young people. Let me also say a special thank you to Chuck Viferman, to Clark Whitfield. You all, thank you so much. You all give so much of your volunteer time, and you clearly know the games, you call all the plays correctly, you call all the guys their position by the correct name, and you do this out of love for the game, but most especially love for the people and your communities. So thank you all so very, very much. You too make our city proud. The holiday season is here, is a time to be thankful, a time to rejoice, a time to be glad, to be happy. But keep in mind, for whatever reason, holiday season for some people is a very sad time, a very sad time. So if we ever need to show love to everyone, let's, let's show people that they are loved and that we love them. And so be kind to everyone, and in turn, people will be very kind to you. Uh, Mr. Raleigh, you are not the only one who got the calls about the Christmas parade's date, the 5th, the 7th, or 13th, and I too had to keep on verifying the fact that it is the 13th at 7 o'clock, uh, PM.